June 5th, 2023 Springfield Local School Board Meeting to Order. Mr. Adams, would you do the role for me, please?
Sure. Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Farola?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Let her just stand.
The ladies lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome. Participants will be limited to five minutes duration. Are there any citizens' comments?
Hi, everyone. I'm Tina Hartong, SLAC president. I have been asked to ask several questions this evening and ask for your input. One, with the additional cost of hiring a transportation supervisor and the purchasing of buses and sophomore, our software, are we receiving immediate costs this year?
Dustin, you want to talk about that? Or? We had a transportation committee and we had a detailed cost analysis of that. We knew we were going to have to hire a transportation. That was part of the equation. The amount that we estimated was higher than what we're actually spending for the new contract. And we had, Dustin, we have software, but we had a certain amount of money in there, like seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe it was.
Yeah, we had an extra seventy-five thousand dollars in startup cost factored into the analysis that we conducted there and a ten thousand dollar per year line item for the routing software there. So beyond year one, the routing software will be fifty-eight hundred dollars a year, which will be well below the line items budget there. And in year one, it's about seventeen thousand, which the addition, no, seventeen thousand for the whole year is covered by the startup expenses there.
Okay.
So overall, the cost to bring it in-house will be cheaper than continuing with the contract that we had.
So this year, there will be acquired savings?
Yes.
And then subsequently, years after. After the lease purchase is done, these buses are ours, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then have we ever, have we considered that in the past with more students and more busing, that we did not have an administrative supervisor position for this and we do now? Or we're adding one now?
That was part of the contract with First Student. They provided a supervisor position in the garage there.
Okay. So they provided it before we're going to provide it now?
Yes.
And it wasn't still in their, in their costs to us?
And that's part of administrative, was it?
Well, it's a, it's a supervisor.
Supervisor, not administrative.
Right.
And on that line item, we are spending less annually than what we budgeted in our analysis as well.
Okay. And one last question. How did we reach the decision to add an additional administrative position? I know we weren't rehiring an administrative assistant at Schrop.
But we're not, we're not, we're hiring an administrative, we're keeping the same amount.
So we had a posting for an assistant at the seven through twelve building?
Yes.
That's on top of what we have right now?
For you guys, but we didn't replace the assistant principal at Schrop.
Okay.
So it's, it's the same amount of administrators that we've had in the past.
Okay.
So it's not adding an administrator. Does that make sense?
It does, but we didn't need, we found that we didn't need two at Schrop, correct?
Because we took, because we took a grade away from them, so it's only going to be three grades now.
Okay. But we're adding?
One to Springfield, but I've already talked with Mrs. Ganser about that and we've come up with a plan.
Okay. And then we're adding one assistant in the seven through twelve?
We're adding, no, we're adding one to the, we're taking one and we're just rearranging them for right now.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not hiring a new, we're not hiring another administrator.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Um, I, I, I just think the, it's not real clear if we didn't need one at Schrop and we didn't need an extra one this year, years past, at the seven through twelve building. The question is, why do we need to add one now?
Well, because of just, just of the reconfiguration that we're doing right now at the high school with the seventh and eighth grade, trying to separate them completely and make them their own entity.
Okay.
So, and we can talk more about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. And Tina, you know, anytime you have any questions?
Absolutely.
Please just come see me.
Are there any other citizens' comments? At this time then, excuse me, it is recommended that the board approve a revised exempted employees benefit and salary agreement to reflect the addition of a transportation supervisor position.
So if I'm not talking correctly, excuse me. Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. I got excited.
We should add a motion.
I'll motion it.
I'll second it.
So we have several employees who don't fall into the certified position or an administrative, so they're in the exempted employees contract. And we are now just adding our, our transportation supervisor to that contract.
That was the only change in the agreement, was the change in language to add a transportation supervisor to the covered employees.
And everything else is the same on that?
Am I correct? That's not a, an additional salary schedule, it's just moving the position into existing?
We already had a, yeah, we already had a salary schedule for the maintenance supervisor, so we changed that to be department supervisors and use the existing scale, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Number, going to personnel, there's a resignation to the board, excuse me, recommends accepting the resignation of certified employee Joyce Housley effective the 2023-24 school year.
So moved.
Never do.
Oh, with them all, okay.
Sorry.
Administrative contract, approve, did I read something?
No, you didn't.
Okay. Administrative contract, approve a three-year administrative contract for Danielle Starkey as the Springfield Junior High Associate Principal. Administrative contract, approve a three-year administrative contract for David Jovanovic as Schrop's immediate principal.
I think somebody saw. Oh.
Six point four, superintendent secretary contract. Approve a three-year contract for Paulette Ryan, who is the superintendent secretary. Six point five, employment. Employ Kendra Cox as a 100% third-year teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, and this would be effective for the 2023-24 school year. Six point six, employment. Employ Claire Miller as a 100% second-grade teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, effective the 2023, 2023-24 school year. Six point seven, employment. Employ Dana Taylor as a 100% English Language Arts slash Theater teacher per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, effective the 2023-24 school year. Six point eight, employment. Employ Melinda Hamilton as a 12-month transportation supervisor at Step Five with two-week vacations per the exempted employees benefit and salary agreement pending proper licensure, effective July 1, 2023. The motion before discussion.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Has been moved in second, open for discussion.
So, so a couple things. Six point one, Joyce Housley, I wish I could have known her more than I have. I had a chance to sit down and talk with her and she just said, you know what, it was, she's a retiree hire. She said at the moment that she retired as a teacher, I think she was out two months and she realized she missed it. So she came back as a, as one of our literacy tutors. And then with the reconfiguration of our literacy tutors, she says it's time for her to start doing things and going out. So we thank her for her service. I think she's going to be missed from a lot of people, so we're going to miss her. And I, like I said, I really wish I could have had a chance to work with her. Administrative contract, so for Danielle Starkey, who's here today, thank you. One of the things that we talked about when the high school was created was that seventh and eighth grade was going to be a separate, when the school was built, they, the plan was to have a, a junior high principal and a high school principal and keep the junior high separate from the high school. We know that through just changes and cuts and everything, it's become, the seventh grade and the twelfth grade has become embedded together. And we know that seventh and eighth grade is a very special time for our kids. It's middle school, if anybody's ever been in a middle school. It's, it's, Mrs. Hartong could attest, middle school. It's a, it's an interesting time for our kids and we need to focus on seventh and eighth grade. So the idea with this would be with Mrs. Starkey, very impressed with her stuff that she had from her interviews that we had had when she was applying for the Schrop position and really trying to make the seventh and eighth grade special for her and focusing on behaviors, focusing on academics, focusing on making the right choices for our kids and making the middle school something a little bit more special instead of them just being thrown in as seventh through. And I think, and I'm really excited about that. Next, the administrative contract, Dave Jovanovic, he's here, thank you. We went through a large process to go through for the position. We had different, we had a screening interview and then we had interviews with administrators, we had interviews with teachers, then we had interviews with parents. And each one was, Mary did an amazing job with it, so thank you, Mary. And Mr. Jovanovic came out, that's for the Schrop principal, and he and I have already been talking and we have a lot of great plans moving on for Schrop for next year. You know, our goal is to change some of the perceptions of Schrop and make it a place to where, and he's already started to put some things into place, so thank you on that. Superintendent Secretary, this is for Paulette, and I can't say enough for Paulette being with me. I mean, she truly does save, saved me quite a bit, so. And she, she is amazing and she holds us all together. And being that, like Mary doesn't have a secretary, a lot of times Paulette will help fill in to help us with what we need. Employment, Kendra Cox, Kendra's here, thank you, Kendra. Kendra was somebody who was riffed with us two years ago, or not, last year. And when we had the opportunity to, to come back, she applied and again, went through the interview process and came out. And Kendra, we're very happy to have you back with us, so. And I know your third grade team is very excited to have you. I've gotten so many hugs from the third grade teachers. It's fabulous. Claire Miller is going to be our second grade teacher. She's not here today, I'll see her. Met with her, again, she's going to be a great addition to, to our teaching staff. Dana Taylor is here, that's Dana. She interviewed, I mean, our interview, I was so excited. She's going to be an English Language Arts teacher, so this is going to be our high school's second new English Language Arts teacher, so.
And theater.
And theater, so yes, so at theater, so that's going to be, that's going to be good and welcome. We are glad that you are here. You're welcome. And then Melinda Hamilton, who's also here, is going to take on the transportation supervisor. And if the people who are in transportation, they know that that is a very important job. You know, that's our kids riding big yellow machines. So thank you, Melinda. Okay? So, any questions on any of the hires there?
So just for clarification, we're really just shifting administrators around at the seven to twelve building to focus on the seventh and eighth grade, correct?
Correct.
Because we had a principal and two associates.
We had a principal and two assistants.
Assistants.
So what I'm doing is taking one of the assistants, making them the associate, okay? And then bringing in another assistant there just so we can get the high school back to where we have to get it. So there'll be a principal, two assistants, and associate. Now, having that extra assistant principal there, one of the things that we found out within the district, that there are times where, you know, Mr. Jovanovic and, you know, Mrs. Ganser, let's say they might both be at a conference or a, you know what, we can then take one of those assistants and, you know, Mary does a great job going over to Schrop, we can take one and bring it to Springfield or vice versa. So we have some versatile. Or if there's something going on in one of the buildings, let's say there's an incident where, I'm going to use you, Mr. Jovanovic, because you're here. You know, Mr. Jovanovic is tied up with the situation, sometimes we are, but he needs some help, we could say, hey, we need somebody to go down there to help. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility that we really haven't had before. And our focus then also is, yes, to focus on the seventh and eighth grade, which I'm really excited about, some of the changes that have already started to happen, but then focusing on our nine through twelve and start, you know, bringing our high school back to where it should be. So I am, I'm excited. I am excited for it. Yes?
I have an order that's going to be seventh grade. Is there going to be like different bell scheduling stuff like that?
Not this year. That, that's something that we're going to work on, but one of the things we are doing is lunchtime. Right now, the seventh and eighth grade eat lunch with the nine through twelve, so that's going to be totally separate. We've also blocked ELA in math for an hour, so some of the schedules are going to be off a little bit. I know the teachers weren't too happy with Danielle, but we moved some classrooms. So eighth grade is downstairs, correct? So the whole eighth grade team is together downstairs and the seventh grade team is upstairs, so we won't have a lot of them going up and down. And then keeping the bathrooms, like middle school bathrooms and high school bathrooms.
I think that's good.
I, I'm, yes.
Eighteen rounds and twelve rounds together, two years doesn't make a lot.
And, and I think if you talk to any, yeah, there's, there's some eighth, seventh grade girls who've got googly eyes over some of those, love the, you have googly eyes also? Over the seventh and eighth grade, so. But eventually, yes, a different bell schedule. And I think back when this building was originally created, I think from what I've read, that was part, you know, I think, and you could tell me if I'm wrong on this one, but I think that the whole idea was even to keep, like the seventh and eighth grade should not even be like interacting at all with the, the only time that they will be is the ones who take algebra or foreign language.
And it is taking it back to that. I think, Tina, they can attest to that, too, that the seventh and eighth grade had a world of their own.
That's what I heard.
And, you know, with the cuts that had to be made, programs that had to be, that had been cut or, you know, eliminated, I can see, I can see where it was necessary maybe to make as much use of the staff that was there as possible, but I'm thrilled to know that maybe seventh and eighth graders are going to have, again, have a world of their own.
Yes. And I've heard stories, and I've heard stories of the middle school, of some of the teachers were talking to me about it and just saying that they, they miss, like you guys lost your identity, almost, if that's, and I was a middle school teacher.
You know, we like the area, you know.
But, but, but I was a middle school teacher and it is, it's, it's a special, it's a special, and then your team and with the kids, it's just something that, so hopefully we can get your identity back in, in the building.
Are there any other comments? Thank you. Mr. Farola? Hey, Mr. Adams?
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
No.
Motion passed. Number seven, service agreement, TransFinder. It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with TransFinder to provide a software system for bus routing and scheduling. Motion.
A motion.
Mr. Ray?
I'll second.
Want to talk about this?
Um, so TransFinder, we have reviewed several options in routing software in the market and received quotes on them. TransFinder, we believe will be the best product to fit our needs and within our budget there. We've talked to them and implementation in the, before school starts here is going to be tight and a lot of work, but I think Melinda's up for the challenge. She's been routing for a long time and I believe this is a great software product, which also includes a lot of parent communication tools, includes an app to help keep parents updated when there's changes to the routes. And as we progress through, with GPS technology, we can, parents can look and see where the, you know, where the bus is at and how long until it's there, which will reduce a lot of calls and anxiety there through that process. So I believe this product has a, has a lot of tools that will be very beneficial to us and as we continue through, has other modules like Service Finder to help maintain the bus, buses and that which are integrated right into this platform. So it'll be a great suite of tools for us to use in our transportation ventures.
Is the app going to be free to all parents?
Yes, it'll be free to parents.
Now, does that include the GPS on it now? Will you be able to see where the buses are at?
Uh, the GPS will be an additional service that we'll include at a later date there and that is an additional item when we talk about costs that we budgeted for separately there as well. So the, the routing was the longest implementation, so that's why we have it on now, so that we can get that process started and have it in time for school to start.
Okay. I think, Dustin, we also have to mention that a lot of other schools, districts use that software and that is, is growing. That company is growing, so the chance of that company going out is slim. So that was one of my concerns, that we would, we wouldn't invest in a company that's not, you know, stable, is growing and its reserves are growing, so.
But they had a long list of schools in Ohio and I talked to several about their experience with TransFinder. They've been very pleased with it and they are a sponsor and work with the Ohio Association of Pupil Transportation Supervisors there and so I think they're a very strong company with a great background, so.
Any other questions? Sorry.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Number eight, Ohio Schools Council Bid Authorization. It is recommended that the board approve an authorization to purchase from school bus bids received by the Ohio Schools Council.
So moved.
Second.
So this is, we belong to Ohio Schools Council and it's a, it's a service that schools can join and they do a lot of big purchasing for us and so we can get things at a cheaper cost. So what they did for us here as part of our cost with it is that they went out and they did the bids and looked at the prices for the buses to make sure that everything that we were doing, we were getting the best deal possible. There were legal fees involved that we didn't have to pay for because we belonged to this program. So this was a, a good service to help us make sure that we're getting the best for our, best bang for our buck. And I think they did a.
Yeah.
Ms. Terry?
Yeah.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number nine, municipal lease purchase agreement. It is recommended that the board approve a municipal lease purchase agreement with Santander, am I saying that right? Bank for eight buses.
So moved.
I'll second.
So we went for a loan, that?
A lease purchase loan.
A lease purchase loan, it's called. We were approved, so we were able to buy eight, eight buses with us. And remember, once we get all the buses, the buses are going to be ours. So, and one of our goals in getting the buses, we didn't want to get all the buses the same year, so we have buses that are, that range a span of years, so when we could start replacing them when we need to, instead of the incident that we ran into back in the eighties where all our buses went bad at one time.
I think it's also important to realize that the money that we were spending for First Student helps to pay this off. So it's not new spending.
No.
It's transformed over to another item.
Yeah, on a per-bus basis, we're spending less with the lease than we were spending with First Student per bus.
Ms. Terry?
Yeah.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Number ten, motion passed, sorry. Number ten, revised financial recovery plan. It is recommended that the board approve a revised financial recovery plan. Mr. Adams, no, first we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Been moved in second. Mr. Adams, do you have any?
Yeah. Let me get this done. When we presented the five-year forecast, it was recommended from the state that our recovery plan needed to match our forecast. So we went through an exercise to make sure all the numbers match up. So basically, the revised recovery plan matches identically with our five-year forecast. So what we're going to do is, once we approve it tonight, we will send it down to the state superintendent and they will approve it and then moving forward. Now, it's interesting to note that if, say we have more money, say, say the school gods open up and we get more money from the state or whatever, then we'll do another one because my forecast will change. Conversely, if things get worse, then we'll do another one. We just, it just links us with our forecast. That's about it. The forecast that was approved at the last board meeting, so.
Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Farola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Number eleven, overnight and extended trips. Eleven point one, boys' basketball. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the boys' basketball players and chaperones to travel to the University of Denville to attend a boys' basketball team camp from June nine through June 11, 2023. All expenses for this trip will be paid through fundraising and the participants. Eleven point two, girls' basketball. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the girls' basketball players and chaperones to travel to the Cedar Point Sports Center to attend the Point Team Camp. We have made families pay for extracurricular activities for over two years. All of those reasons make it hard for me to sit here and vote yes to adding positions to our administrative staff when things are not being added for our students and our teachers. I know that some will take my position of a no vote to mean that I do not support or value our administrators. That is very far from the truth. I value all people that support education. However, I do not think now is the time to add more positions to the administration. We have asked our students and our teachers to adjust to things being taken from them. We've asked them to keep hope, keep showing up, keep pressing forward with less for less. The new motto in this district has been do more with less. And it seems like that's what's expected from our kids. I dislike that so many things on the agenda are lumped together, so me voting no on one item could come across I do not support many of the things on the item. I do. I support many people that were voted yes tonight. However, contracts in this district need to be looked at and changed. I can't keep voting yes on things that changed back in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen and remain the same. I can't vote on contracts that haven't been adjusted for certain positions while things in our district, district continue to decrease for our students and staff. We can't continue to do what we've done for years as we lose kids, families, programs, and teachers. We need to value the needs of our students just as much as we value our leaders. I am not a politician. I have never believed in doing what others tell me to do just because they tell me to do it. We teach our kids to find out facts, learn with knowledge, don't be afraid to fail as long as you're doing the right thing. Don't be afraid to speak up. We can't continue to do things the same old Springfield way and expect change. Our district is in trouble and without the same, without looking at things and making real change, we will continue down this path until we have nothing left to save. I ran for the seat because I wanted to make change and I have failed up to this point. I admit I have had my voice silenced at times. Nothing has truly changed. My own kids and their friends and classmates have less and less each year. What my son had at two thousand and nineteen when he graduated, my kids now do not have at all. Teachers are taking on more and more every day with less and less support. We need to make change and true change from the top to the bottom in order for our district to turn around. My no vote was not against anybody on, my no vote is because if we don't start making change, we'll have nothing left to save. I'm glad that everybody showed up tonight, but the sad part is that most of you guys are on the agenda and that's why you showed up. Tonight I'll get on Facebook and social media and I'll have forty people complaining about what we voted on tonight, but nobody shows up to make the change. So I spoke up. That's all.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I do. Uh, it's not been an easy four years and as I contemplate a board seat this fall, it's been the roughest four years I can see that we've ever had here. And there has been some change. Change is not easy. Change begins when somebody left and I'm glad that person left and now we have a new superintendent. And basically she was left, she was handed a basket and to put all the parts back in the basket. That's not an easy task. We have looked at things and decided things and you have to look into the future of where we can go. And I understand Miranda, I really do. I love, I love her passion, I love her heart in, in this. But on, on the fence of some of the things that we have done here, we're shifting some people around, we're not increasing costs, we're trying to make some moves that are going to look, any organization starts with a board, CEO, and that is the CEO, she's got to make the hard decisions. We can either go up with them or we can go down with them. Where else would you want to cut? Are we going to start cutting administrator salaries? Because that's tied in with the Slack contract, am I not? And I got two people sitting here and you know it is. If you haven't gotten raises, they haven't gotten raises. So it's not, one hand is not getting and the other hand is. No, that's not the case. I try to run on a, on a platform of truth. My father always told me, tell the truth even if it hurts. And yeah, there's been times where I've told the truth and I've gotten clobbered for it. I think that some of the management changes that Shelley's trying to institute, and we don't see eye to eye all the time, and she knows it. I think that's our Italian heritage, but she's trying to definitely move this district forward. You've got three board members. Miranda's more outspoken than the other two and that's fine. We all come from different walks of life. I look at things, I was just telling Cynthia Friday night, I look at things a little bit different because of my manufacturing and the, and the things that we've had to do in manufacturing in order to stay competitive in a world market. We don't live in a, in a country where we just compete among ourselves. We compete in a world market. And what I would love to see, and I know there's tension between some of our unions and this administration, and I know that. Industry will, is driven by performance in, in a term called kaizen. And that's where you come together with management and workers and you, and the workers drive this. I want to see some change. I'm wondering if it can work in education. I've seen it work in manufacturing, in multiple different companies that are world-class, Parker Hanafin, Eaton, St. Crobank, even small companies in Kent, Ohio that's still in business when I left it back in ninety-six. We don't take this lightly. I saw a whole division shut down and moved to Mexico because of greed and I saw five hundred and seventy-five people lose their jobs. And some of those people, they needed those jobs because their skills only allowed them to have that in the world, in the, in the marketplace in which they found. We had to lay off at Portage, uh, Portage Lakes. We laid three and a half off when I was board present last. We rotate. My comment over there was, I'm tired of laying people off. I've seen too many people lose their jobs over my lifetime of my work and I'm getting ready to close that chapter in a couple, in twenty-some months. We don't take this with a grain of salt. I have lost sleepless nights over the last four years over this and I wish we could have it all back. I really do. The unfortunate thing of going through tough times is better times are coming. When I was terminated, this thought kept me going. The sun's going to set in the west on any of the circumstances that we ever have, but it's going to rise the next morning in the east and that presents new challenges and new opportunities. And we have to embrace some of that and some of it's hard and I realize that. I went with six years without a pay raise at Kent Latex. That hurt me, my, 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 my base pay, if you want to call it that, my overtime pay and it hurt me in my social security and I had three small kids. And we made it. I got paid a bonus in lieu of a raise for six straight years, two complete contracts of three years apart, three years apiece. I get it, I understand, but I think some of the things that we're taking will lead us down a path of, of success. It's slow-going, just bear with us.
I wasn't going to comment, but I will, uh, because I want to say it again. Having been in, you know, an assistant principal's, teacher's position, assistant principal's position and long-term as a, uh, principal, I understand the time intensity that it takes to properly take care of kids. And the students in our district have a lot of needs. There are, there's a big population that has a lot of needs and you need people to be able to work with them. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with, um, what is planned to happen at the junior high, uh, taking it back and I, I'm supportive of having the high school students have, have enough people to take care of them because I understand what it does, you know, and not everyone does. They're Saturday and Sunday working on paperwork so you can be out in the hallway all the time, so. Okay, any other comments?
I do. I just want to thank all of you here because although I'm not an edcier, I work with most of you on different things and I know how passionate you are and how deserving you are of these spots. So I just want to thank you. And that's all I have.
All right. Uh, it is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved? Second?
It moved in second, Mr. Adams?
Uh, Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. We're a little behind time, but anyone staying for the next meeting? You can start here just a couple minutes.
Let me, uh, get to it.
Okay, Tyler, Lee, all right. I'd like to call the, um, Special Local School Boards of Education Public hearing for rehire in, uh, for, on June fifth, twenty twenty-three to order. Mr. Adams?
Roll call. Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mrs. Ferola?
Legal agents.
Legal agents to the flag of the United States of America. Inconsiderate by the law, for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the contemplated employment of Christopher Adams as treasurer. This meeting is being conducted by a majority of the members of the Springfield Local School Board of Education pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section thirty-three oh nine point three four five. The purpose of the law in this meeting is to provide members of the public and with an opportunity to express the individual response to the board's contemplated employment of Christopher Adams in the position of treasurer. The statute is silent with respect to the way in which this meeting should be conducted and appears to leave such matters to the discretion of the Board of Education. Accordingly, this meeting will be conducted as informally as possible. Each person who wishes to speak will be given a maximum of three minutes to address the board. The total amount of time for this meeting will be fifteen minutes. The board will not condone any statements that are not based upon facts. Statements must be limited to the contemplated employment. Finally, as president of the board, I reserve the right to restrict inappropriate comments and the general procedure of a meeting. The members of the Board of Education will not entertain questions, respond to comments or interrupt the public's opportunity to express concerns or make statements as long as they are, uh, appropriate and, uh, within, and fact-based. Each person addressing the board shall identify himself, herself, and give his or her address. This meeting is required by law and is the right of the public with which this board understands and respects. At this time, is there anyone present who would like to speak or ask questions? Mr. Ferlo?
So.
Give your name, full name of the.
Bonnie Ferlo, first to us. Um, being a treasurer seems like a very kind of underwhelming job, like not flattering what he's doing.
Yeah. Is the speaker?
Not.
Please.
So, being a treasurer is kind of a tough job in many ways, in my approximation, just because you're kind of at the mercy of what you're told to do, right? As a treasurer, do you make decisions or do you give recommendations? As a treasurer, do you go spend money without being told how to spend it? So finding someone to fill this role with a background that makes sense, understanding the books, how P and L statements work, how a pie chart works, how layman people who don't know how to break down pockets of what goes into that P and L group is a difficult situation for mostly everybody, right? So to me, I think there's just a lot of confusion about personality versus how you prepare for a meeting, about how information flow works. So I think just breaking it down, making it make sense. If there are like specific questions, I know the finance committee has started and I think that, I've heard a lot of pros that have come from it. It seems like people are being receptive, open, kind of listening more and so they have the opportunity to understand what it actually means. To go hire someone from the outside is probably a very difficult situation. I doubt you have people banging on the door that want to be a treasurer, um, but I just think, um, I hear chatter from everybody. I talk to everybody. I have students in the schools, um, and people from the Lake Moore community, everybody talks, but they say this person's to blame, this person's to blame, but if there's full transparency of every cent, what are we missing? So that's all I got.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? The board is open to any comments. Okay, is there? Arna, it is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved? Second?
It moved in second, Mr. Adams, would you call Ferlo?
Second was, I'm going to have to move back to my own format here. Ms., Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
I lost it, Dustin.
and I think that I've heard a lot of pros that have come from it. It seems like people are being receptive, open, kind of listening more and so they have the opportunity to understand what it actually means. To go hire someone from the outside is probably a very difficult situation. I doubt you have people banging on the door that want to be a treasurer. But I just think, um, I hear chatter from everybody. I talk to everybody. I have students in the schools, um, and people from the Lake Moore community. Everybody talks, but they say, this person's to blame, this person's to blame. But if there's full transparency of every cent, what are we missing? So that's all I got.
Is there anyone else who wishes to? The board is open to any comments. Is there? Are none? It is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at this time.
So moved.
It moved in second, Mr. Adams, would you call roll?
Second was, I'm going to have to move back to my own format. Ms., Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
I lost it, Dustin.
Yes, use a pencil.
Wifi dropped.
No. Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Petrie. Yes.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Ms. Farola. I'll remember what time.
I'm sure you will. All right, it's been, uh, the motion has been approved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
It's back, really. Cynthia.